All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Just a reminder, if there's anybody that wants to speak before the council, please complete a blue speaker card and turn it into the city clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Plot.
Here.
Councilmember Rigby.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Here.
Mayor Protan Lomor.
Here.
Mayor Tisar.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be by Pastor Dennis Morales of the Calvary Chapel Eastvale.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for our time now as we come together as a community to seek what is best for our great city of Eastvale. And we thank you for making our city the best place to live. But it will take more hard work and dedication to keep our status, we know. And we thank you, Lord, for our newly appointed mayor, Mayor Protan, and council members. We thank you, Lord, for our city staff and for our community leaders, and we pray that they continue in the spirit of strength and wisdom as they seek to keep our great city moving forward in strength and prosperity. And we pray for our public safety, our first responders, and to grant them just a special protection. We pray for our troops, and to grant them a special grace in this holiday season as they're apart from their families. We pray for the families of those that are abroad and fighting for our great country, just having had upon them strength and granted peace. And as we come to you today, we pray for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion, to dwell in the spirit of understanding, Lord, and to build bridges, to refurbish intents, Lord, and allow us to grow closer as a city, nurturing a bond with the community. We thank you, and we praise you for this day, a day that you've given us, a day of transition and a day of glory and honor, and continues to remind us all that we are here today, Lord, just to accomplish what you seek, that we, in the pursuit of truth, may something greater than ourselves. And we thank you and we praise you for this day, with glory and honor in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Rigby, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Will everyone please rise? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we'll be recognizing past participants of the Eastvale Military Banner Program and giving some other presentations. So for the banner program, I just want to recognize some of our service members. If you're here when I call your name, please come up and get your banner. Some of them, some of the banners were destroyed or damaged, so there'll be some certificates given out instead. From the U.S. Air Force, Josh White. Rebecca Charaval. Jason Franco. And Joshua Tyler. From the United States Army, Nancy Cortez. George Cortez. Grant Wickman. Damon Olivas. Brandon Delany. Anthony Valdez. Gabriel White. Evan Holliday. Jason Palito. And Greg Coker. From the United States Coast Guard, Ron Eric Franco. And from the United States Marine Corps, Andrew Colazo. Robert Flores. Christian Quintanar. Ray Avizian III. Nick Aguilera. Brian Gonzalez. From the United States Navy, Antonio Cecia. Michael Barone. Nigel Dean Canetti. And Victor Barone. Thank you all very much for your service. Next in the queue is Waste Management. And these are for the Recycling All-Stars.
Good evening, Mayor Tisari, councilmembers, city staff, and members. My name is Linda Chavez, and I am proud to be the city's Waste Management Representative. Tonight, I am here with Barbara Jimenez, our Recycling Coordinator, and Miguel Velasquez, our District Manager. We are here to recognize the 2016 Recycling All-Star recipients. Each year, we have Waste Management drivers recognizing one residential customer and one commercial customer for their outstanding commitment to recycling. Their recycling efforts help divert waste from our landfill and allow us to conserve natural resources. This year, we are honored to recognize the Agila family as our residential 2016 Recycling All-Star. I believe Elizabeth Agila and her son, Thomas, are here to accept the award. We are also honored to recognize Lewis Enterprises, Eastvale, Kate Wade, as our commercial 2016 Recycling All-Star recipient. And Josh Breland is here to accept the award.
And Josh just got engaged to let everybody know. Congratulations.
That's all for me tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is the presentation of the Money Magazine plaque.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and councilmembers, city staff, and citizens. 2016 has been a big year for the city of Eastvale, with several accolades that were received, most notably from Money Magazine. For those of you that are not aware, the city of Eastvale received ranking from Money Magazine as the number-one best place to live in California, and was also ranked by Money Magazine as number seventeen best place to live in the United States. With that, we did decide that this is something that we would like to commemorate by purchasing a plaque that has the front cover of Money Magazine as part of the plaque, as well as the article and a brass plaque on this that gives the both ranking number one and number seventeen, and so we would like to present that to the council.
What are you breaking?
The plaque is something that we will proudly display in City Hall, and we would also like to acknowledge our partner agencies that were mentioned in the article and certainly played a role in obtaining such recognition, and that would be Euripa Community Services District for our Parks and Recreation, and Corona Norco Unified School District for our excellent schools, and also our Public Safety Personnel, which is CAL FIRE, and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. So it did not happen in a vacuum, so we truly appreciate all the efforts and dedication of all of the partner agencies.
Agreed.
And with that, we did, because there was so much emphasis put on the Parks and Recreation, and one of the photos in the article is of one of our parks, and the ranking of our school district, we have taken the liberty of ordering a plaque for Corona Norco Unified School District, as well as a plaque for Euripa Community Services District, and we will be presenting that at one of their upcoming board meetings.
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move on to item five, public comments. So if there's any, did we get any comment cards?
Yes, Mayor, we received two public comment cards. The first speaker is Mark Plow from AC.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Honorable Mayor, you're in the city council. First, congratulations to all of you who have new seats. It's not easy to campaign, it's even harder to win, so congratulations on your new seat here. I'm here, and I just say hello. I'm from Southern California, Edison, and I'm here to say, if you have any needs or concerns that come up, I'm here to serve you and your constituents in this fine city. Please don't hesitate to call or write at any time, or always on my cell phone. So that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you all so much, and congratulations on your ranking in Money Magazine, so great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Centill. He's with Assemblymember Sabrina Cerro to his office.
Good evening, council. My name is David Zuppiyala. I'm here on behalf of the Office of Assemblywoman Sabrina Cerbantes. I am one of the field representatives for her office, and we do look forward to working with you all. Congratulations on being council. Also, this Saturday, December 17th, we will be having a community swearing-in ceremony at Corona Courthouse, 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. We are inviting members of the committee and council to attend, and we look forward to seeing you soon later. Thank you.
Just, is it Supervisor Cavalloni that's going to do the swearing-in?
Judge Cox.
Okay, and it is at Corona City Hall?
Corona Courthouse.
Courthouse. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Please extend my regrets. I'm not going to be able to attend, but I wish I could. I have a previous engagement, but thank you for the invite.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Such a wonderful night tonight. I was going to be delighted to congratulate all the council members, and just congratulate everybody for a fine job, of course, as faithfully as you do. I'm just here to request that we could get a report on the progress of the investigations moving forward on the burning businesses that are taking place in our city. I believe on the October 26th meeting, there was a discussion, and somebody talked about operators, business operators, that had been approached and questioned about their political activity, but there was at least one that was going to work for the city and actually going to leave the city to do business elsewhere. So I'm just wondering if there would be a report, because somebody said they were going to be an operator for the days to move or to progress towards the things that was requested. We can update on that in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have something coming up on the next agenda? Or soon?
If the council wishes, we could give an oral report this evening, or you can request to have that placed on the agenda, which would be January 11th.
Let's just have it put on the January 11th agenda. Thank you. So January 11th meeting, you'll get an update on the burning homes. Next is consent calendar. Do we have any requests to pull, any items?
No. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just usually on the consent calendar, you, the council can approve the consent calendar by a simple motion to approve all. However, unless there's an item that's going to be pulled, we don't have any items right now that are being, that are requested to be pulled. However, there are two items on the consent calendar that have either occurred or have been approved prior to tonight's meeting, and because there are two new council members that weren't involved in those, Councilmember Rigby and Councilmember Plot will not be able to vote on items 6.2 and 6.8. So the rest of the items will have to, the items, the rest of the items can be passed with all five of you, but what I would recommend is that you have one motion to approve the consent calendar without 6.2 and 6.8, and then one with those two, which all, which only the three of you can vote on.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
I would recommend we approve and move the consent calendar, the exception of 6.2 and 6.8, to be considered under a separate motion. Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protan Lomor?
Aye.
Mayor Tisar?
Aye.
Motion passes by, sir.
And then, Mr. Mayor, there'd be a motion for 6.2 and 6.8.
Do I have a motion? Second.
Councilmember Plot will be noted as an extension. Councilmember Rigby will be noted as an extension. Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protan Lomor?
Aye.
Mayor Tisar?
Aye.
Motion passes by, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 6.1, waive reading of ordinance and resolutions submitted by the city clerk.
You've already, seven, fire.
So that's all, okay.
Fire code.
All right. Item seven, public hearings. Chief Skriptner.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Congratulations on your new seats. Look forward to working with all of you throughout the next year. What I have before you tonight is a staff report for an ordinance replacing Title 110, Chapter 110.20 of the California Fire Code as part of the Eastvale Municipal Code. A little background on this, the proposed ordinance will adopt and amend the 2016 edition of the California Fire Code, which is based on the 2015 International Fire Code, and replace Chapter 110.20, the Fire Code of the Eastvale Municipal Code, in its entirety. A new California Fire Code has been adopted by the State Building Standards Commission, which will become effective January 1st, 2017. State law allows local government to amend California codes, provided that the amendments are more restrictive and are necessary in order to provide a high level of life safety. Every three years, the state of California adopts new models, new model codes based on the latest codes published by the International Code Council. These codes are reviewed and recommended by the State Building Standards Commission. After publication of the codes, local governments are encouraged by the state of California to adopt and amend these codes to address local climatic, geographical, and topographical conditions, as well as administrative provisions. Staff has analyzed these codes and has prepared amendments to ensure that this code meets the specific needs of the city of Eastvale. There is no fiscal impact, and the strategic plan impact is not applicable. I have our fire safety specialist, Sandy Hastings, here if you should have any questions.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any? Okay. Close the public hearing. We have any comments, questions?
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rush?
Not necessarily on this one, but I don't know if it was the last update, chief, or the one before that, but when the fairly controversial item of residential sprinkler systems came up, was that 2010 or was that 2013?
I believe, I can defer that to Sandy, she can better answer that.
How has that played out? Because I know it was, there was a lot of financial concerns on behalf of the builders, and my specific concern was maintenance when the properties turned over. Has that been an issue that's really affected us, and do we have a substantial amount of homes that have those, and how has that all kind of played out?
Okay, so the first part of your question is, is there a big maintenance?
Well, when, when the fire sprinkler, so the Fire Code, as I understand, now requires sprinkler systems in residential units above a certain square footage, is that correct?
Any square footage.
Any square footage?
And a new home built in the state of California is required to have fire sprinklers, whether that be apartments, condominiums, or single-family homes.
So has there been any feedback, negative, positive, that we've received on that?
Well, we do have the support of the home builders.
BIA?
BIA, thank you. In California, that's how we were able to get that passed in the first place. I would say that there's a positive impact of residential sprinklers, because they allow people to escape their home in the event of a fire. Presidential sprinklers are designed to give people time to get out in the event of a fire in about 10 minutes. So they definitely save lives as compared to a fire in a home without sprinklers. Regarding the maintenance of residential sprinklers?
Specifically on single-family, because if you're, if you're part of a, you know, attached unit, you have, you know, or a rental, there's layers there, but in a single-family unit, has there, have we received any complaints or concerns over maintenance of the system?
No, because there is no law that requires maintenance of sprinklers in a single-family home. That is up to the homeowner to maintain, it's up to the home inspector upon sale of the home to inspect those sprinklers and make sure that they're still operating. If there are any, you know, repairs that need to be made, that's a responsibility of the single-family homeowner. In apartments, those are typically a commercial, not a commercial sprinkler system, but a higher level of system, that there is maintenance required. We have not received any complaints that I'm aware of in the city of Eastvale about the cost of maintaining residential sprinklers.
All right. Appreciate it, thank you.
Just to clarify, just to clarify too, under NFA 25 or Title 19, these single-family home units have no restrictions to those, those bigger codes that NFA 25 has or Title 19. That, that's only, yeah, that's only, just to be clear, that's only to, from my understanding, that is only to attached housing, apartments, condos, but not to single-family homes.
Exactly. NFA 25 applies to commercial fire sprinkler systems and sprinkler systems typically in an apartment building. In condominiums, they are often the single-family, they're like a TV system, so it doesn't apply. And that'll make the restrictions generally there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protan Lomor?
Aye.
Mayor Tisar?
Aye.
Motion passes by, sir.
Next, we'll move on to 7.2, general plan amendment to high-density residential and change of zone to R3 for 13,000 Citrus Street.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Eric Norris, your planning director, and congratulations, new council members. My report is rather brief tonight. Staff's recommendation is that you open the hearing, hear any testimony from people who are here tonight who cannot come back in January, and then continue this hearing until that time. For your January 11th meeting, we'll have a complete staff report on the whole, the whole issue at hand, and the council can deliberate at that time. We're not ready to make a decision tonight, because our environmental document will be circulating from the, through the rest of this month and into January, so that circulation period will be done prior to the January 11th meeting, and we'll have information on that as well in that more complete staff report.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and open the hearing. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have one public comment, it's Sandra Potella.
There's more questions, because I just found a office the other night. I don't know where, there's information on maps on where, like where the buildings and what exactly is happening over there. I live literally like right across the street, so from the farm that it's always been, and I'm new to here, so. But, I wanted to find out, number one, if there was maps and where we could do them? Is there any maps like that that you know of to show us what the vehicles are?
Mr. Norris?
Yeah, mayor and council. At this time, what's being proposed is only a change in the general plan and the zoning designations for the property. We don't have a development in front of us yet, so what this does is it basically would allow the property owner to sell to a developer who would then come in with a project. So, we don't have that project yet. We're simply setting the stage for a project to come in in the future.
So, you don't know if it's going to be housing or park, more parks?
It will be, it will be housing. Right, yeah, right now, the property is designated for single-family housing, like, like much of Eastvale. The proposal at hand would allow them to build at a higher density, more of a town home type project.
Okay.
And I, I can show you where the, you can see maps of what's being proposed, yeah.
The other question I have too is, there is two concerns I have. One, the, the traffic on Citrus, because I'm right there at Citrus in Mayville, and because my street is the one that opens up towards school, is, and people can cut through, there's no stop sign there, and I'm seeing accidents there. I also see, well, I mean, I'm on that corner, and I watch it, and there are issues with the traffic right there. So, I wanted that to be brought to my attention. I don't know if this is the place to do it, but I call the city, and they're like, oh, you should just go to me, so. But, I think it's, that is the issue. The, what was the other one? I have people sitting, like they, I actually, it was the first time I ever happened to have a school, and like, I had people sitting right in front of my house when my school left out, because it's right where the full sign is, like halfway on my property and halfway down, of where the no parking is. And I actually was scared, because there's like four male partners sitting in their car, and I wasn't used to that, so, hopefully this park hasn't come out today, because I'm not sure what that was. But, the other thing was, this rule. If you guys have more development over there, what are your plans for schools? Because I have two children, both are special needs, one of them has to go into a special day, for them. The schools there cannot maintain or have my children be in the same, basically in the same track at the same time. So, I can't have my children in school at the same time. I have to stagger them. So, six months out of the year, I would have to have my children home during school hours and six months with them, or whatever, you know, in school, because of the way that the layering of the two different things are. The school is so full, it could not put my year grader and my year grader into the same , into the same block. Because one of them is in a special day, the other one is regular. And so, that's also an issue, that the schools are so full that they can't fit my kids. I have homeschool currently, but I was looking for the middle school district. I came from one of the best school districts, I have the Troy Tech School District in Orange County, and I lived out here because of the school, and now I look at it and I go, oh, great, I can't put my kids in homeschool, because they, they can't even put them in on the same track. So, if you go and build these condominiums, which aren't even single-family homes, and you go down that route, what are you going to do about the schools? Because I moved here specifically for that, and now I can't even put my students back in the school, because it's very hard to raise two special needs kids, and I have even not much of a break.
Thank you, ma'am. Unfortunately, we don't control the schools, that's the school district, so I would share your concerns with them, so that they can address.
Thank you, Bill, though.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's a concern that I have, and I want to know where I can bring the rest of the students to the school.
You just did it. You just did it. Thank you very much.
And just to, to add to the mayor's comments, existing traffic and that stretch between Citrus and Schleishman is atrocious. We understand that. The three schools were built there, at one point in time, the schools had, the school district had busing, and they had staggered start times. And throughout the years, for various financial issues and whatnot, that has kind of faded away. About, maybe two years ago, a year ago, probably a year ago, we hired a motor officer specifically, not specifically, but most specifically, to address school traffic, and it's been a big help, because they can get in and out and hide where they need to hide and, and try to regulate that as much as possible. So, for any existing issues with respect to illegal parking, or loitering, or things of that nature, our Public Works Department and our Police Department are the place to go. Our Public Works Director's right there, and our police, our Assistant Chief is in the back. With respect to, to traffic potentially being added with new projects, the forum for that is when this project comes back, or any other project comes back, that's part of the environmental analysis that's, that's looked at, and I'm sure they'll have consultants here to address any questions of how much traffic is being added, what type of traffic, things of that nature, so.
The only thing I would be wondering is, where, if I want to find out about the stop sign?
Could you repeat that, just because we record the meeting, sir?
Gotcha. I was saying, my only question is, if I'm wanting to request a stop sign there, or the issues that are going on because of safety, and there's not an environment, when we're pulling, if we're pulling out of our complex, people are pulling in, they're flying around the corner, and I can't count from each time I come home, I've almost been hit, because people are not going around that stop very safely. So, where would I, or who would I speak to about that?
Our Public Works Department?
Oh, of course.
Joe Underwan is, is right there.
Yeah, if you can give them the exact location, we'll take a look at it.
Do I have a motion? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We don't have any other speaker cards?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you're going to continue the public hearing.
Oh.
And to January 11th, 2017.
My apologies. Do I have a motion to continue this?
I would so move. Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lorimer?
Aye.
Mayor Tisari?
Aye.
Motion passes by, sir.
All right, we'll move on to council business. 8.1, contract award for traffic signal installation at Sumner and 65th.
Mr. Bradshaw. Yes. Mr. Bradshaw. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, Craig Bradshaw, supervising engineer. Installation of the traffic signal at Sumner and 65th Street is currently a budgeted item in our capital improvement project program. If I can figure out how to use this. Which button? Oh, I got you. Well, anyway, I've got this wonderful picture looking southbound on Sumner Avenue at 65th, and the street is completely empty. I assure you, when we did our traffic studies, that the traffic volumes were such that they met the requirements of the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. This is the state code that governs whether you install traffic signals or not. A traffic signal in this location will actually help facilitate pedestrian and vehicle movements, particularly during peak hour, and it would help improve the safety, safety of this intersection. Next slide. Basically, the intersection, the traffic volumes entering the intersection met the criteria for the state codes. The traffic signal installation, I guess I'll show you a picture of a traffic signal, but I believe you've all seen many pictures of traffic signals, but it includes a safety lining at all four corners, pedestrian countdown heads, like you see in the lower right-hand corner, the, the newer audible push buttons. Those push buttons, you actually have to hold down for two seconds, and they'll click a couple of times, and then they'll, then it's, it's actually, it'll be programmed, it'll speak to you. And new striping and upgraded ADA ramps. Next slide. We're proposing for this project, the, it will be, well, what should we be proposing? Is using Measure A funding in the budget. $315,463 would be necessary, including a 10% contingency. The contractor that was the low bid is Leknor Belco Electric. They typically go by Belco Electric out of Chino, they're off of Schaefer Avenue, and they're really, they're, they're reputable contractor and well-known in the area. And the recommendation is to approve this contract, get it right, approve the contract to Belco Electric as being the lowest responsible bidder, in accordance with a lump sum bid price of $286,795, plus the 10% contingency of $28,678 for the traffic signal installation at this location. And we would utilize the budgeted Measure A funds as described, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents, and staff would be glad to answer questions.
Do we have any comment cards on this?
We receive that.
We'll close the public hearing, and do I have any comments or my questions? Councilman Rush?
Thank you. Well, I can't be happier about this, and I've received nothing but positive feedback on getting it. It's never like that, when I drive it.
Right.
So, two questions. What's the schedule to, for completion? And is there anything in the contract if it's not completed on time?
There's $500 per day liquidated damages. It has a 90 working day timeframe. Approximately half of that timeframe is just the ordering and the receiving of the traffic signals. They're running between 10 to 16 weeks for ordering. So, that's what really controls the timeline. So, we're looking at May for the signal to be fully installed and functional.
Okay.
But they won't actually break ground until the order comes in?
There's preliminary work they can do as far as preparing for the foundations and the electrical conduit runs in the street. They'll do what they can.
So, they're going to disrupt traffic?
There'll be very little disruption during the installation.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
We're pros at construction.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I would so move. Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lorimer?
Aye.
Mayor Tisari?
Aye.
Motion passes by, sir.
Move on to 8.2, contract award for radar speed sign installation project number 92009. Again, Mr. Bradshaw.
Okay. This is for the radar speed sign installation project. This project was originally bid, and we did not have school zone-specific signage, and we came back and rejected the bids, and we rebid it with this type of signage. These signs will be used, there's, there are 10, there are 12 locations where we, where we'll be installing the radar speed signs. 10 of those 12 locations are close to schools. The code allows that if you're within 500 feet of a school, that you can have the school zone-specific signage, and you can, and you can enforce the, what they call a prima facie 25 mile an hour speed limit in the school zone. And how these signs work is these, the flashing ball, top and bottom, they will be programmed for the whole school year, for each of the school, based on their start schedule and end schedule, and will probably pick an hour around the start of, of, of the, of the school schedule. And on some streets where we have multiple schools, some of these will be flashing for probably a longer period of time. So, the beginning of school and the end of school, these will be flashing, and that's to let people know that the 25 mile an hour speed limit is to be enforced. And what's also nice about these, and one of the features that's necessary in California, you can see the small sign says when schoolchildren are present, that's required in California to have that statement on, 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 on those signs. And so, the enforcement occurs really when schoolchildren are present and officers can give tickets. This board gives you the actual speed limit, this actual speed of the cars driving through the intersection, and it acts as a data recorder. It records the volume, the volume of the traffic and also the speeds, and so we can collect all that data. And these are really, this is really a nice setup in, in school areas to help reduce speeding. And this is locations, like I said, 10 of the signs are fairly within 500 feet of the different, various schools. And we've got two signs that are the standard radar speed signs, like I believe you've seen them on 65th, there are two other locations, and one's located up on Lima Nine, I believe there's one down on Citrus that are outside the school zone. This is funded in large measure by the Beyond Grant Funding, $83,549. That funding is required to be spent by the end of June, and we can also get an extension if necessary, but we expect the project to be done by then. This is funding that has been provided to us by WR COG through one of their programs, and then we would use Measure A funds to make up the difference of $29,696, so for a total of $113,000. That includes the 10% contingency. I believe there was eight or nine bidders on this project. Siemens Industry out of Riverside was the low bidder. Siemens is actually a very large company and has a very good reputation, and they, they should, they'll be a good contractor for us. And with that, I'd be glad to answer questions.
Do we receive any comment cards?
We receive that.
All right. We'll close the public hearing. Do I have any comments, concerns, questions?
I have a comment.
Councilman Rigby?
I think this is great. I'm excited for this. I think it'll really help with helping to address concerns of traffic within the city. You shared briefly about data that's recorded in this system. Just for the public's information, can you share what, what we will do with that data a little bit more?
Well, for example, if we're updating a speed survey, we could take the data, and we could use that for an update of our speed survey when that time comes, but it gives us a good idea of the volumes and how they fluctuate during the day. And a lot of the volumes occur during the, the period of, you know, before school and right after school. And if we see serious speeding problems on a given day, around a certain time, it really, it's really valuable data for selective enforcement.
Thank you. Any others? Do I have a motion to approve or not? Anybody?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lorimer?
Aye.
Mayor Tisari?
Aye.
Motion passes by, sir.
8.3, approval of the MSRC funding agreement for electric vehicle charging stations.
Good evening, Mayor Tisari, Mayor Proton Lorimer, and City Council members. Congratulations tonight. This report is about AB 2766, AQMD Local Government Match Program Contract for Electrical Vehicle Charging Infrastructures. Back on August 26, 2015, the City Council has approved for staff to apply for the, this grant, MSRC, and we have been successful. And in November 2015, we have received a notice that we were awarded a grant of, in the amount of total project of $220,000 with 50% match. That means we get $110,000 grant money, and the $110,000 has to be used for the AB 2766 that we receive monthly, yearly, I'm sorry, from the AQMD. Just for information, AB 2766 is an assembly bill that was done, adopted by the State of California, where the, the money that registration for the vehicles from the MV have been allocated for cities and, and local agencies to be used for this kind of purposes, to reduce greenhouse gases, and to purchase electric cars, to get electric charging stations, and so on and so forth. We have received approximately $70,000 per year for the past several years, and this is several, a separate funding agreement. In 2015, there is a local government match program in addition to this allocation that we receive every year. So, the requirement of this funding agreement is that for the match, we have to use a surplus fund that we have in our budget first, before we can apply for the $110,000 funding from the grant. So, we have, upon checking of our budget, we have about $160,000 this year. It's enough to cover $110,000 that we have to provide for the match, so there is no local fund, or general fund, or gas tax money that can be used for this. The project is for several EV charging stations. The location is going to be fire station number 31. We are proposing to put four, two, actually, two stations, up to four vehicles, and then for the future city hall, we are proposing to have four stations to service eight vehicles total. Tonight, staff bringing to the City Council for approval, MSRC funding agreement, and for the for the council as well to authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents. And we have sixty-six months to complete this project, five and a half years, which is staff expected to be, to be completed in addition to, um, um, in anticipation for the projects that we have, the City Hall and also the Fire Station Number Thirty-One is being completed right now. I'll be available to answer any questions.
Do we have any comment cards?
We've received that.
All right.
Out of the eight stations total, current and in future, how many of those are gonna be open to the public?
We haven't decided all the details, but we're thinking of using a portion of that for public and portion of that for, um, for staff.
Okay.
And we have learned from other agencies, um, Councilman Rush, like for some of Chino Hills, what happened is that they farm it out to a company who put this together at their cost, and then there's a cost-sharing agreement. So every time you charge your car, there's, um, like a charge point kinda company that uses a card, and, um, based on what our discussion with City of Chino Hills, the cost that this company receive is enough to cover for their profit, for their costs, putting all these installations, and also to cover the charges for the electric, or the power lines that they're being used, power supply that the city use.
Okay.
Is the funds that are coming out of the, out of the general fund, are they guaranteed reimbursement?
The hundred-and-ten thousand dollars is, um, is guaranteed reimbursement as soon as we spend a hundred-and-ten thousand from the, the funding that we have, the AB Twenty-Six-Seven-Six-Six.
Is the fund coming from the general fund or is it coming from the AQMD? Sorry, I meant the.
AB.
AQMD fund?
Yes. AB Twenty-Six-Seven-Six-Six is AQMD funds.
Okay, so as far as, this makes you have the question right, as far as, this is concerns, we have to spend that fund, but the remaining comes from the grant itself to pay for it.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
And how did we come up with the locations of those?
The location at that time, we decided to, to be, um, the place where we can serve the public as well as the city staff and then the fire staff, fire department staff. And, um, there's another opportunity in the future where we can also work with, say, commercial developers in commercial areas. We can put that in there, but in this case, we have to work with the commercial development when the time comes.
If, if I may add, Mayor Tesari and council members, uh, this, the city uses two electric vehicles, uh, one predominantly, one for code enforcement, and the other one is for general transportation for council members, commissioners, and staff. Those vehicles were both purchased with AQMD dollars. At this time, we are charging them like a plug in the wall, just like a residential user, excuse me, which is highly inefficient for, um, and creates a, a larger draw on the utilities, and that's currently done at Fire Station Twenty-Seven. So we wanted to put at least two of the electric vehicle charging stations at a location where we park the city vehicles so that we can charge them, and when the city vehicles aren't charged, they would be available to fire department personnel to utilize. Um, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, um, I believe this grant does restrict us from placing them at a location that is not owned by the city of Eastvale. Um, we had at one point inquired about placing some of the electric vehicle charging stations possibly at the Eastvale Community Center, and AQMD had said that was not a viable option because we don't own that property. Um, that's not a, um, a city-owned facility. So there, we will be pursuing other opportunities in the future to place electric vehicle charging stations at, um, locations like shopping centers, but that does require significant collaboration with the, um, the shopping center owner. But should we build City Hall within the performance period of the grant, we could certainly place some of the electric vehicle charging stations at the City Hall, Public Library Civic Center area, because that would be a facility owned by the city of Eastvale, and we could make those EV charging, charging stations available to the general public.
Thank you. Councilman Block? Thank you. Um, when is that expiration date of that, the performance plan?
We have sixty-six months from the time of the funding executions, about five and a half years.
Any other discussion? Do you have a motion?
I would so move second.
Councilmember Block?
Aye.
Councilmember Reapie?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor DeSage?
Aye.
Motion passed as opposed.
We'll move on to eight point four, The Urgency Ordinance for Tree Management. Mr. Induwon.
Good evening again, Mayor Tesari and council members. This evening, I'll be presenting the Urgency Tree Ordinance on behalf of Christine Jamorlin, who is out ill today. Uh, this ordinance was introduced the first time to the City Council on October twenty-fifth of this year, and the council provided a comment that if approved, our entitled project with existing tree would be exempt from the ordinance. So staff tried to provide the answer at the meeting on the second reading on November ninth verbally and in the staff report, um, which is, uh, which pretty much stated that any previously approved development project, which includes a condition of approval requiring to remove and/or relocate an existing tree that is either currently in the public right of way or be in the future public right of way, will not be superseded by any provisions of this new ordinance. Any amendment to such condition of approval must be obtained through consent of the applicant and approved by the City Council. However, during that meeting, City Council requested that this answer, or this clause that staff added at that time, to be included in the ordinance. Uh, that's exactly what staff is bringing back to, um, your, um, attention this afternoon, uh, this evening, and, um, Section Fourteen of the new tree ordinance addresses that issue and, um, including the language exactly that was approved, um, at the last meeting. The urgency of this ordinance is because we are in the process of applying for a tree city USA designation, which is due December thirtieth of this year. So we have to, uh, adopt this before we apply for that three ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council approve this ordinance tonight so we can move ahead with the, uh, application for a tree city USA. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we receive any comment cards?
We received one of the comment cards, John.
For the record, my name is John Cop, KLPB, here at the Capitol.
Welcome back.
So, congratulations, uh, to the newly elected members, Mayor, Mayor Proton, all members. Keen with a written statement which is attached to my request to speak, and I'll try to agree. When I was born and grew up, we didn't invest specifically in and around Detroit for the first three, seven years of my life, and in that time, I saw the laying of waste of complete species of tree mainly in American Elm. The arrival of bark beetle and the decades following the Second World War for all practical purposes simply completely wiped out that magnificent tree. Aside from the arrival of bark beetle, contributing factors in rapid decimation of this tree was the density with which they were planted. There were such magnificent trees that provided a canopy over the streets and avenues of the Midwest that the residents, decade after decade, couldn't resist planting those elms from mile after mile without interspersing them with other varieties in their neighborhoods and streets. When the trees died, whole neighborhoods were left treeless and as barren as desert landscapes since, uh, it wasn't, and it wasn't just the public spaces that had trees that were dying, that had died and were dying. When I lived in Roswell Park, the city just east of Detroit, I was faced with the residential high cost of two diseased American Elm trees on my own property costing several thousand dollars per tree, and now it is failing. As I drive down the streets in our city, I can't but notice that, metaphorically speaking, in a line that seemingly never ends, I notice the same tree planted until, same trees planted until they disappeared, and this perspective line seems to merge at the horizon. It isn't helping. Proposed Urgency Tree Ordinance, Agenda Item Eight Point Four, is inadequate in several ways and should not be adopted at this evening's City Council meeting. Staff will have time. And my written comments were written before I realized the next City Council meeting's gonna be January eleventh. So my recommendation is, uh, look at what I have written as proposals for amendment and adopt your resolution, and then at your January eleventh meeting, seriously, seriously consider amending. The principal item is that it's far too restrictive. You have four public entities sitting on the board with no citizen membership. The other item is that it's far too infrequently. Uh, once a year is laughable, and even goes so far as to imply that the community lives service, the city is paying for this ordinance. So, uh, with that, I will leave it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good, and close the public hearing? Anybody with comments? Discussion?
I would recommend approval with respect to Mr. Cop's statements. I'm not opposed to having a citizen, you know, type representative. We don't wanna get it too big, and because of the fractured nature of the city with School District, JCSD, city, other entities, you know, tend to deal with that, so something we can look at in the future.
I concur.
I approve to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Block?
Aye.
Councilmember Reapie?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor DeSage?
Aye.
Motion passed as opposed.
Item Eight Point Five, Request to Increase In Contingency Funds for Chandler Street Selby Avenue Improvements. Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Back in September, we awarded a contract to Hillcrest Construction to reconstruct half of Selby along the front edge of the fire station and basically half of Chandler along the front edge of the fire station. That work was somewhat delayed because the current contractor for the fire station Horizon's contracting, uh, they would be responsible for the storm drain. And so, um, the, the street, street work didn't get in, really get under the way until toward the end of November. About the time they started working, we realized that the quantities that were bid did not accurately reflect the drawings. This is typically on public works types contracts, we include items. If you're doing a building, a lot of times it's a lump sum type bid. Well, this project has a bid schedule with fifteen different items, and very clearly, you know, it says these items can increase and decrease, but it says, basically says payment and the word of contract will be based upon the actual quantities in this bid spec, and we have to pay based on what the quantities are installed. A large number, most of the street resurfacing asphalt for Selby is not included in the, in the bid proposal, in the bid schedule, and also there's considerable amount of curb and gutter that is missing. Uh, we are going to be over our ten percent contingency, which currently right now is about twenty-five thousand. We expect the total cost is gonna be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars over, in, into the, into contingency. Uh, we, we have come to you to ask for extending to twenty-five percent contingency on this project, where it ends up being about sixty-three, sixty-four thousand dollars, and that will be sufficient to complete this project. I'd be glad to answer questions.
Do we get any comment cards?
We've received that.
Thank you. We'll close the, uh, public comments. Uh, we have any discussion on this? Questions?
Yeah.
Councilman Rigby?
Is there any, uh, does that increase fully lie on the city?
We've discussed that internally. There may be some chance of recovery from engineering firm that assemble these quantities, but the dilemma is, is the quantities are still required to be installed. Uh, the difference is, if we may have gotten a little bit better bid price because we would have had larger quantities. So that delta, it's probably not that large, uh, because we have to install, you know, all the curb and gutter and do the paving regardless. And so, uh, the, the recourse we have is probably not that great.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Rush?
So it seems like there, there's two issues, the delay in the storm drain and, and the inaccurate bid. Who, who did the plans that the bid documents were based on?
Well, we, we have two projects here, um, per se. We have the Fire Department, uh, Fire Station project.
Mm-hmm.
And the street itself is a separate contract because it is funded through CDBG funding. So, um, when we built the project, the storm drain was part of the fire stations. That's what Craig is talking about. He just trying to portray the, the timeline that we have. That's why we have the street doing it now, but there is no relationship between the storm drain and the street at this point.
No, I, I understand that, but.
Right.
It was, it was mentioned that the, the street improvements could not occur until storm drain was complete and the storm drain was delayed. Is that correct?
Right. Well, yeah, the, the storm drain was just completed about two, three weeks ago.
So what was the, the reasoning for the delay in that portion?
Um, they, they, just a scheduling issue that they, that the general contractor would have at that time. So, um, uh, we still, it is still within the overall schedule that they have, and we're dealing with, um, a general contractor as overall because the storm drain was under the general contract. I hope I have, uh, answered that question.
Well, I, it, it sounds like they either had too much to do or didn't have enough resources. I mean, so that, that's not the main reason for the increase, though.
Right.
It's, it's the bid amount.
Exactly.
So who, who did the plans for the street?
The, the.
Who did the street plans that the construction company bid off of?
The, the actual contract, consultant is MSL Engineering of, of Laverne. However, it is under our contract with WLC Architect, which is the, uh, uh, our, um, design team. So we are not having a contract with MSL. We have discussed this, um, with, uh, WLC, and they understand the situation, and they, they're reviewing this, and we're still communicating with them and talking to them. And, um, the approach to this is that we need to move forward with this because we are the finishing touch and, and the sprinting to the finish line to complete the fire station, and, uh, the contractor has been very, um, uh, cooperative working with us, and, um, as well as the consultant. We're still working with them and then reviewing this. The, the, um, uh, the agreement or the, the, the consensus we have is that go ahead, finish the work, and then see what exchange order we have, and we'll talk again about that at a time.
Okay. And, and that's fine. I just, I'm trying to get to clarification on, I mean, doesn't, either the, the contractor under the CBEG project messed up on their bid or the plans were incorrect? So which one was it? Or both?
The, the, the contract, uh, the consultant, uh, who prepared the bid documents, the bid, uh, schedules, they provided, um, um, inaccurate and erroneous, uh, bid, bid schedules.
And, and did we, I'm assuming we reviewed that under a public works bid, so did we not catch that?
We, we, right, we, we did not catch that because we depend on the information that was given by the, by the consultants, right?
Okay. Where does this, um, I know we're moving all of our CDBG funds to public works, which I think, you know, given everything that's happened is fine. What, what, uh, cycle is this coming out of? Because we had built up a bunch of CDBG funds for Chandler.
Yes, sir.
Probably gonna be receiving that.
Yes.
So kind of where, where we are from a balance perspective?
Uh, we are okay for the balance because we receive about hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars per year annually, and this is actually, this project was, um, in the CDBG, uh, project list in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. However, uh, if it's not completed, they usually roll over and becomes phase two. And they have been, they have been, um, involved with, um, reviewing the documents that we have.
And we can only spend it in that area, correct?
Yes, sir.
So what happens when we're all done with everything we can do? Do we still keep receiving the funds?
We still receive everything the funds, and then, um, uh, we just apply. We still keep receiving the funds and then we just apply for the new sixteen, seventeen or seventeen, eighteen year. And the city council actually approved in a few meetings ago that all the funding that we receive about hundred and thirty-five, hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars is all for construction because we don't have community, what is that, community scholarship?
We can only spend up to twenty-five percent of that, I think.
Right. And we are looking for projects in the area of the Chandler, specific plan area, to add sidewalks and to do ADA ramps and so on.
Okay. Is there any, this is a little bit off topic, but if you'll indulge, is there any opportunity to expand our C D B G allocated area? I mean, it's based upon income, I think. It's based upon income? Yeah.
Councilmembers, it is based upon the depressed census tract. So that's how the C D B G, that is the, excuse me, Community Development Block Grant. And so our allocation is based on census tracts and what is considered a depressed census tract. So in the city of Eastvale, with our demographics, we're very limited. There are other cities that receive a lot more than us. So we have to focus our efforts and our funds kind of, and spending those dollars in those areas. So that would be the Chandler corridor area and the Swan Lake area.
So are we? Was it just Swan Lake is in there? Because I thought it was out. I didn't think it was in there.
I think there's a small piece of Swan Lake that's considered part of the, because our census tract actually kind of crosses over into Aruba Valley.
Well, then maybe when we're done with Chandler, we start looking at the right-of-way improvements along the frontage of Swan Lake.
On Hamlet Avenue, yes.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Councilman Plot. Yeah, one quick question. Just so I'm understanding this correctly, so out of the C D B G fund that we have, the remaining that we're going to cover with is the utilities gas tax fund that we get from that. Is that correct? And then we're only restricted in those areas of Swan Lake and the Chandler corridor area. Anything outside of those two areas, pretty much we cannot use that money other than those two areas. Is that correct?
It's correct.
For C D B G.
Yes, no, yeah, for C D B G for that grant. Yeah, no further questions.
What's the anticipated completion date now that this is happening? Do we have an estimate?
If our contractor would have good weather next week, we're probably looking at two more weeks if he has good weather.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have one more. Is this, is this delaying the fire station completion?
No, this doesn't impact the fire station completion.
Just how you get to it.
Right. Yeah, you need to complete for-
It can be done and they'll just-
No, it needs to be complete.
There's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion.
I would so move.
Second. Councilmember Plot.
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lamar.
Aye.
Mayor Tesari.
Aye.
Motion passes by six.
We'll move on to eight point six. City council meeting and commission meeting schedule. City Clerk Aguilar.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is just a routine item in regards to the twenty seventeen city council meeting and commission meeting schedule. The current dates of the month, time and location for each meeting have not been changed unless other officers notice. Currently, staff is seeking the direction of the council in consideration of going dark for the month of July or August. I know this has been brought up in the past fully by Councilmember Rush. There have been various boards that the council currently sits on that they do conduct a summer recess in the month of August. And if you, resident staff report, those memberages, those actual boards represented and Board of the Six Boards and Commissions that the council participates in does have a summer recess month of August. So we are looking for direction to determine whether the council would like to pursue going dark for the month of July or August. That concludes my report. We have to answer questions.
Do we get any comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Got any discussion on this one?
Mayor Tesari and councilmembers, if you recall, this past summer, we had a rather light agenda in the months of July and August. And several of the councilmembers were trying to plan vacations. And so the question did come up because of the light agendas, would it be wise to take a summer recess as many of the partner agencies observe a summer recess? So we brought this forth this evening for your consideration. Certainly is not something we have to do. It's just something that the council had expressed interest in several months ago.
We can always schedule a special meeting if needed.
Correct.
I'm kind of slightly in favor of it. I mean, it cuts down a little bit on our costs unless we have anything major going on, but, you know, July, maybe keep, I just, my personal opinion, maybe keep it on in case we have any lingering budget issues or, I mean, you guys always get it done on time, but just as a contingency, I don't personally see any reason we need to be here in August unless a special meeting needs to be called. Not that I'm going to Aruba or anything. I wish.
Maybe Harupa.
Yeah. Harris, California.
Any other discussion? Councilman Larimer? Mayor Proton, forgive me.
Hey, we're all, yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I like this proposal. I do like the month of August. In interactions with other city councils, many also observe a similar practice. And along the lines of the fact that we can call a special meeting, that's what I would lean towards. So I would like to move forward with taking a recess or vacation. A hiatus from meetings in August.
We all know you don't take vacations.
Councilmember Rigby?
From a staff standpoint, do they foresee any projects or issues? I know it's months away, but do they foresee anything that would affect either July or August or recommend one or the other?
Councilmember Rigby, typically the agendas are very fluid. We do plan them out several months in advance, but at this point in time, I do not recall any agenda items off the top of my head that are slated in August. We would likely try to move, move things around to accommodate, to, you know, condense the schedule and put them in July if, if council chose to take, to observe a recess in August. Or we would obviously push them into September. So we do have some flexibility. As council had indicated, if there is something that is urgent, like a development project that urgently needs something to be heard and approved by the council, we could call a special meeting.
And just to add, it's probably likely that we'll have a certain shopping center on our agenda next year, which will probably take up a significant amount of time.
Yes, sir. There's a lot of projects coming down the pipe.
If there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we go dark in August.
Second.
Councilmember Plot.
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby.
Aye.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lamar.
Aye.
Mayor Tesari.
Aye.
Motion passes by six.
We'll move on to item nine, city manager and staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Tesari and councilmembers. I just want to congratulate you all on your new positions. We look forward, staff looks forward to working with you and working with our new councilmembers and we are here to serve you. And if you should have any questions, we're happy to assist. And I want to thank Councilmember Rush for joining us at City Hall today.
It was nice seeing you for lunch.
We, I hosted a lunch for staff in appreciation of all their efforts in two thousand and sixteen. So thank you for joining us. And with that, I have no further comments.
We need a bigger city hall.
That is very true. Ran out of places to sit and not enough ingress, ingress and egress in and out of the kitchen.
I have one, only two reports, sweet and good news. Council, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for approving staff's recommendation six, seven months ago when we chose to bring asset contractors to do street light, I'm sorry, traffic signal maintenance and also roadway maintenance. And based on the three, four months invoices that we received from them, and this is in terms of the county, we used to have the county since we became a city as our maintenance arms, but this year, at the initiative of city council and city manager, Mayor Busma was included, we went out to solicit contracts from the contractors. We have M C E who's doing roadway maintenance along with G M Seeger, and we have Aegis who's doing the traffic signal maintenance. Based on their response, we are very pleased. They are very responsive, very cooperative. They are very good customer service. And the result of their four months invoice, we're about seventy-five percent of the county, what the county charged us with a less amount of work that they provided to us. So that's very good news and we continue to do this and we provide again the full report after fiscal year ends next year. The second report is that also we are pleased to announce that we are granted two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant by S H I P, Highway Safety Improvement Program. In this case, our city manager, Nisa, actually has been pushing staff to work on this to add pet count, pet countdown heads, so with all the blinking fifteen, fourteen seconds or, and then also in some areas of the traffic signal, we're adding audible pet head counts. So we've been received, we have received this grant about two weeks ago, ready for Thanksgiving, and it was really something to be thankful for. And going to think forward as soon as we see the agreements from Cartrans. That's the good news that we have to share with you. Right? Thank you.
Any others? All right. We'll move on to council comments. Councilman Larimer?
Yes, thank you. I want to congratulate everybody who's up here tonight. Great races won, great races run and congratulations on your wins. Excited to have you on board. I did need to give a couple of updates. R C A, Western Riverside, well, the Conservation Agency. The last meeting, there was a fee credit that was given, recognized by the board for the city of Temecula and R C A adopted its new leadership for the coming year. Excuse me. For SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, the meeting for December was the economic summit and that took place earlier this month. Governor Gray Davis, former Governor Gray Davis and Lieutenant Governor Gavin Newsom spoke. And also, if you go to their website, there are the presentations available of some of the economists that spoke. Specifically, what might be of interest is the inland empire. Some positive news there. And that concludes my report. Thank you. And congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Councilman Plot. Thank you for letting me join you guys. Welcome aboard. Councilman Rush?
Thank you. I've mentioned this before, it's a pedestrian, you mentioned schools and just made me think about it. And I'm not sure where we landed on it and I have the fortunate privilege of becoming good friends with the principal for Claire Barton where my kids go to school. So she asked me to carry this on. On Eastvale Parkway, there is a crosswalk that dead ends into a curb and then there is a curb cut without a crosswalk. And they've continually asked why that's the case. My general answer has been, well, you know, we can't put crosswalks everywhere, but they're actually now stationing a, they have a crossing guard. It's a striped crosswalk, but it dead ends right into a curb and they're asking why there isn't a curb cut with the ADA access and all that stuff. So I can swing by tomorrow to take a picture and send it to you guys.
Yeah, we're actually in process. We just let the contract for that to be installed.
Oh, really? Okay. Very good. On R C T C today, there wasn't a lot of business, but unfortunately, the cities, primarily in Western Riverside County, are in a worse state, I think, or a disadvantaged state, call it that, not worse. Supervisor Tavelloni was elected as the chair and Supervisor Washington from the third district was elected as the second vice chair. The only city representative that the cities have is Councilmember Dana Reed from Indian Wells or Ranch and Mirage, I believe, which is an eastern city. Five out of the eight executive board members are board supervisors. I guess it's a weird thing where if a supervisor is the second vice chair, then now all five of them, that's what the clerk mentioned today, so all five. And Supervisor Jeffries vehemently disagreed with it, but they put him on anyways. And then we have our western cities rep, which is Councilmember Benoit, and an eastern cities rep, and then a large cities rep, which is Mayor Bailey. So from a, you know, leadership standpoint, we're not in very great stripes on R C T C. Unfortunately, it's kind of, you know, supervisor centric. I think the only saving grace is that we do have Supervisor Tavelloni. And I'm thinking primarily in regards to the I fifteen and moving that forward. So obviously representing both Eastvale and Harupa Valley, should probably get in front of him after the first of the year and just do a little powwow to reaffirm our, you know, interest in getting that project done. Scott Road, which is a little bit ahead of us, was just funded about fifteen million out of their thirty-six or thirty-eight million, so should be moving forward. And I talked to Joe a little bit today on that as well. So eh, we'll see. I'll see what we can do on W R C O G when I get started on there as our funding comes from both aspects. Congratulations to councilmembers Plot and Rigby. Condolences as well. No. There is a support group for spouses of councilmembers, so I'll have to introduce you to that. It's a lot of Lifetime movies now, I'm sure. Thank you very much, Michelle, for lunch today. It was, it was great. Sorry I couldn't stay that long any longer, but we do need a bigger city. I don't think I've seen every single staff member there, or almost every single staff member there all at one time. And you're literally, like, once you got food, you got blocked in the kitchen until people moved, so. But it was a lovely spread and, you know, thank you, I know they're not here, to our mayor and councilmember Simmons. Hopefully we'll see everybody tomorrow night. And thank you, Mr. Kopp, for sticking it out and always providing us great comments. Appreciate it. Yeah, I told my wife nine, I got an hour to kill, so. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody and take a break.
Thank you. Councilman Rigby?
Just wanted to thank everyone. I look forward to this opportunity. I'm excited. So just the onboarding so far has been really good, especially, thank you staff for all you've done for me. So I look forward to working with you.
The same. It's a real honor to be chosen by my colleagues. Thank you guys very much. Thank you, staff. Continue to make us look great throughout this next year like you have been doing. And I'm just really looking forward to continuing to work with everybody. And I want to thank everybody from District Two and congratulate my wife, Lanay. She got employee of the year at Roosevelt High School. So, yeah. So thank you all very much. Have a merry Christmas, a great new year. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. See you next year.[1796.41]